Did you see any section from real life?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So starting here, which office.
And you should have the gym in front of Mary.
This is thirteen eighty.
This is.
So.
Well, that person already had the conversation.
You got these up here.
Well, yeah. You're basically on it. Great. Yep.
I'll say this to me is to speak all along. Commissioner Brown, if you'll lead us in that location.
Father, once again, we will thank you for giving us some other day and another opportunity. We just ask that you leave us some guidance. Let's make the best decisions for the town in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Just as a flexible agency to apply. I thought it leads to the United States as America. Until the. So that's us all.
From South City District State to events for framework or if it says we balance those. Don't have a partnership to engage community.
I'm going to tell you anyway, if you would read this.
Centers and safety process and value community reversal, innovation, education, drive success in the lately developed society.
The business, um, basically here twenty twenty five budget. Twenty five, twenty six budget work session. Um, the budget question is, uh, I think everybody except. Cause he didn't get here to just sound, that's not a reflection all time. It's just, it's off the doors. Uh, so Commissioner House, are there any questions that I asked everybody? Do you see any concerns in this kind of budget policy? Has been put together and so would you like to go ahead and voice those now at this hour? Cause I, everybody else that I told are pretty much good with what they see. And there may be a couple of corrections coming from staff. As we move forward, but what we have right now, how do you feel about it?
I have a couple of things, um. The sheet, the body cameras.
Um, can you, uh, can you tell us what could use a shirt? The body camera service. Twenty twenty seven.
I said, please spot me on that. Okay, it's twenty five. Yes, sir. Is it, um, is it possible to have? A package that you purchased that's not all encompassing? You're maybe you purchased less of these, but upgrade some of them. Is it possible to use what you have and something that's more modern? Would that be too hodgepodge? I was just thinking of a way to try to be more firm with this, this purchase if it's all possible.
I've covered the body line cameras, then it caught cameras out of date. Our body ones, we can't even get batteries for them anymore. Right. So, I mean, we had to do a whole replacement now.
But this is an obsolescence issue.
Yes.
I was not aware of that.
Yes, there are actually watch guard cameras, which is watch guards no longer. Uh, company, okay, overall, you know, it's not that company, but we can't get any replacements, we can't get them fixed.
And, uh. And when we take, because of that, we also. Have difficulty hearing those cameras as the story. We can't, we can't watch it in the world. Uh, it's just. It's just so, when you indeed, indeed, you could ask, you can discover the request.
Do you think the evidence would be, um, easier to present to a court with the, the modern system? Where you could keep your guys out of trouble if they have no wrongdoing, like if they have under job and.
No question.
Do you think it would really decrease liability?
Some of the camera system, it's all those direct into E Court, which is what, uh, Commissioner finally is talking about. It's a direct DM, they can access it, they can run the video, see it.
That's less paperwork for them to do and seal.
So.
Okay.
What are the changes or issues here as we see? So. Twenty twenty two. Yeah. It's just. It's. No, the claims. Eight months, it's for true. Officer five, eight, three, five, two. Same song, just going for sure. Nothing.
Wow, what a fish, huh?
Well, this. Instead. If your system, when you need to, when you put it on your computer, your cameras. So if it's not compatible, the kind of system. It seems to. It's something that's. To us. Chief is talking about the problems you're facing is, is going to extend.
So being, uh, um, integrated into the system, does that make these products like a niche market where they don't have a lot of competition? Like it is just motorola and excellent, basically.
There's some other companies out there, but quality of what you give is a player.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they're not linked in with equals.
Okay, so that is, that's a unique feature of Axon, yeah.
And, and so equals is. It can always. So. The mix on, you know, cycle through the positive and negative, but right now. It's, this is what it is.
I guess the only thing that bothers me is we're going to pay about a half a million dollars in interest over ten years. And that's the cost of doing business and. Quantitatively, we save money because we reduce, you know, instances with defense lawyers and stuff because we. Stay for everything offense. But you want these laws, and they kind of defend the innocent and the guilty, so it's like, I, that's, that's costly. I just, um, it's very expensive, obviously.
My ability piece of D, we paid one million dollar lawsuit that we had because, you know. We didn't have proper equipment or the camera didn't work and this system worked.
Hmm, you would prevent that, that lawsuit?
Possibly. I mean, we really, really, yes.
I see.
Every agency out here are paying out big lawsuits over a certain budget. But, um, even, you know, they had to take one big one out. Uh, and then system is kind of. Or, I get it, it's, it's a big sticker shop.
Do you think having this system could really, it's. Shows me.
It's probably around about two, three, four, five, showing that my language produces like it's not the point.
Okay.
Okay.
We might use more like with the fire department, sometimes our equipment affects a really. And I didn't know if it's the same situation here.
Well. I've been looking at either accreditation or. Leading our piss assessment that law enforcement agencies can do, and we actually get a reduction on our insurance base if we do the risk assessment. Um, it's pretty, you know, detailed process, much like accreditation process. And it takes over the process, pretty lengthy amount of time to just successfully complete it. But I'm actually maybe doing that process versus accreditation first. Um, cause we do get a reduction in our liability insurance if we, we all with standards.
Okay. Well, then you said, change the language and. Do it in our language.
Yes, sir. Uh, this camera has a translation, uh, capability. So if an officer that's English speaking only is dealing with, uh, someone that's Spanish speaking only. There's a thing on the side they can hit and it will translate what that person's telling them. And then we can alter saying back, it will translate it back into Spanish.
So.
Yes.
So if you're doing a field sobriety test.
Yes, sir.
You have no issue with this person expressing instructions.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and that's fifty-two percent of our demographic, right? You have three quarters, only two thirds speak English, that's a lot of people they need to communicate with.
So.
It's all really the only thing out there right now that can, that does that, you know? They can tap into this AI.
Yeah.
Uh, capabilities and it's, it's just a lot, really, so.
Okay. Debt service being transferred to one point one million to twenty twenty six, is that correct?
The, the debt service la- uh, last year, this year, uh, we paid off, um. The schedule, uh, equipment schedule number six, which was a, a, a capital lease that we signed in twenty nineteen, we paid that off in full of July. So we still have the fire pumper, uh, heat pump debt. And the two large transfers were for the, uh, the match on. The, uh, the two, there were two sidewalk repairs, I forgot, I forget which, who they were, but, but they were, that one makes out that one part of one.
Okay.
And we're just not, like, we've already made that transfer, this year, we're not going to do another transfer.
And we're only going to get like eighty-nine percent of the debt service.
Um, so the legal debt margin is calculated with your, your, um, assessed valuation. Small contractor number could be anywhere in here, it, it's probably legal debt margin is probably forty-five million.
Okay. That's good news. Yeah. There was that our debt, but we're carrying over just roughly over a million dollars in debt.
Uh, I, I don't think, I don't think, for example, on that, uh, debt on the pumper is even that high.
It's really, it's really about two twenty-five, we'll be out of that, two down for next year. Debt service will increase by the two twenty-five annually for ten years for the camera system.
Uh, that's not a debt act, it's, it's technically not a debt, so it will just, it will stay flat at one seventy-three for the next ten years.
Oh, okay. So I'm not financing that. I misunderstood that, I apologize.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, it's, uh, we just have ten years of offer, huh?
Oh, okay, yeah. I did, I had, uh. I have one more, maybe two more questions. Town hall really prepared? Is there, is there a specific, there's like not really a lineup that you guys put in here for your building grounds related to the town hall repair, right? We're talking about soppy and, um, finish it better replacement?
So that, that is, uh, ten five hundred fifteen.
Uh, is it a mistake?
They just gave a hand, about what was going to be funded, what's not going to be funded in this budget. This year and the roof, uh, is already.
Yeah, the two hundred fifty thousand for the roof has been pulled. Uh, we, we managed a complete company in the repair, in the repair for that. Uh, we did a similar thing for Ramsey debt.
Oh, I see, here, Sean, thank you.
Yeah.
We're moving from, let's come track from right here.
So I'm currently going back and, and. From what I've gathered so far, the windows were not part of the original contract. It was an add-on that the commissioners did not choose to. It was talked about, I listened to the video and I pulled the contract. I'm still going through it all, there's a lot, um, but that was an add-on that, um. Was not part of it. So it was about sixty-five thousand, it was an add-on cost and option that y'all chose not to do.
Let's see why.
I'll just give you an example, what I learned today, when they first, um. When y'all first awarded the contract, um, the original was like five hundred and seventy-three thousand. And then three months later, they came back and price and materials had increased to eight hundred and seventy-three thousand. Okay, when there was, and several, there were several things that were not, that were options for y'all, but y'all didn't agree on.
I guess, um, my, my main concern, uh, just, this is a good list, Sean, they put this together for the different, differentiating between funding and not funded. The building badger, fifty-five thousand dollars, um, the other parks that are in town. Uh, do anyone still have like a ADA compliant or, like permanent structures?
Western Park is a permanent structure.
That's right.
Someone might have wanted to, it was restaurant.
Let's see, so anyone has restaurants, yes. Says port of pot, we have the port of John.
Yeah.
Landers has a port of pot.
If anybody, then, no.
All things ADA, no. Anyways, I'm bringing it up, I was, I just saw, I know we got rid of it, but it's kind of stupid, don't get me wrong, like.
Yeah, in the pool.
Yeah. I know, I'm bringing it, but go ahead, I'm sorry. No, it's okay, did somebody call in stating that the port of Johns may not be, like they alleged that it may not be ADA compliant? And we made a decision to get rid of it based on the allegation? Does that, can someone read?
That was.
Story again.
Yeah, sorry, there were several reasons. That was one of the main factors. The, all right, homeless, uh, people were starting to sleep in.
Okay.
I use it and saw, it was just in everybody's bed, so it's just. Um, to, uh, remove it altogether.
Okay.
So that's what.
I forgot about the homelessness thing.
Yeah.
Is the, are the police going to be able to lock it every night at dusk?
That's the game plan.
Okay.
Guaranteed, we're gonna lock, be able to lock it every time with the same.
No, I'm not ready.
Service, yeah.
It'll be secure, though.
Away blocking system now, um, and it would be around a thousand dollar cost, um, to install those. And, um, they're not just systems, and so they're running on timers to the building.
Oh, great.
So, um, and, yeah, so the chief is helping us in the interim until we can get to work, it's a possibility.
Thank you, Grant.
Seriously.
That's a win. Um, the other question was soccer field, we've had constituents time and time and time and time again, bringing up the fact that they want a regulation soccer field. We've talked about it, I mean, it's expensive. But did any other board member feel like they want to give that to South City residents? Do we know how much it costs?
I'm trying to imagine.
It would be not two hundred and thirty thousand.
Yeah.
It would not, it would not be a thing, but you would be able to make it so you had not seven soccer fields. Seven soccer field? Uh, yeah, so we own forty-five, the town owns forty-five acres at Bray Park, uh, the vast majority of it, not sorry, the majority of it is, is, uh, has trees on it. If you were to, uh, rather, uh, you clear, you rent out fifteen to twenty thousand in timber revenue. And then you would have to grow up here and level it, which. Is about, and then also seen that, that altogether, the all-in cost were roughly two quarter money now. We, we can use that, that the one hundred and seventy thousand a field of our money, that must be spent. Bray Park is not currently limited in this, but it probably, it is a restricted money from. Uh, so when a developer comes in and does, goes development and does a lot of that, they have to make, uh, a set, uh, a set amount in lieu of. That's what we spend in parks.
That's before, so the U D O policy or something, okay.
As a stop game, whatever. You shouldn't soccer field program, it's a drawn cost for me. I tried to, so two, three, so it dropped off. So can you give us stock, can I mention? But on that field. Officially. So we can, so.
I think one of the issue of why that, that, a part of the light kind of stopping was when people play on every single day and ruin the field. So if there, if there was, you know, it's possibly a panic problem, the population. We, we do.
That's why, yeah.
Because then.
That's why you have to feel efficiently, you can't just, so, but you, it can be used more, it's, yeah, it's.
It's a field behind Ramsey Gym. Uh, it's still, uh, it just hadn't been developed. And so that deal could actually be used over at, um.
Landis solid.
Landis solid park.
Yeah.
Um, and that's another option, um, that would take.
Cheaper.
Lot to get that deal ready and up and running. Cause it's wide enough and it's long enough.
I remember talking about that field.
Yeah.
So.
So, so, hey, hey, uh, break up, I must point it.
Yeah, but I'm like, my God.
Those like sixty million, so. What was the question? He answered very far in the management, it was like, uh, fifty, sixty million. So, yeah, look, I'm not, it's really. Okay, it was like, um.
If we can get you to do.
Uh, is one of your, is that exactly what the board, I do know soccer fields, is that's what the board collectively wants to see?
Sure, we know, if we can develop, uh, the one side behind Ramsey. And, uh. We realize the one and all that, that we could, and then, as, uh, Mayor Paul Timbs said, rotate them. Uh, where they're not, just lower down to the, with core, and then yes.
And just as, uh, just so it's not a continue, we, we, there, the, it's just so it's not totally sitting there. Is there a. A story of field of money until we get a huge grant to do that twenty-three million dollars? Bray Park. So that, that's current, that's, that's fee on a field that must be spent at Bray Park.
Is it, is it, well, there's, there's a lot of these, doesn't expire, but in the.
Yes.
If you like that, I'm very, yes.
How much, seventy-nine, down to one seventy-nine, six, nine? Seventy-nine, um, what we really, you know, hit and do. And I ain't sharing with others, like Jack and I have talked about this numerous times. We get all these studies. And we put them on the shelf, it would be nothing. Rather than doing that, what is the whole hanging fruit in these studies that we can go ahead and move on? So wherever it moves in, with Bray Park, a study that. Money can be spent on.
Pretty spent.
Does it, does it have to be used on soccer fields?
Uh, it, it, it'd be going to Bray Park.
So.
Originally, uh, in like twenty seventeen, when we first started getting money, the board put, put into, said, restricted it for field two lighting. And I think field two lighting was probably, uh, was probably, that's why I never.
So, so when I was saying, the violence to the rest. Of.
Yeah.
If it's, it's fiscal, it seems to. Um, you know, it's. Um, in the summer and by next time. And then, okay, I was somewhat. It's, it's going to be responsible to soccer field. In seventy. What are these things, those things, Thomas?
That's for, no further, it's the one problem.
We're, we're, it's just a huge to the phone, it's, it's.
Except Bray Park's bad front. Now, this past summer, it, they never made the. Cause they were obviously starting up, stopping up, and we had some pretty large, uh, ball games over there on the weekend. So also look at the possibilities of a, uh, unisex or maybe just two. Um, bathrooms that the public could have access to and see what that cost would look like, John.
You're going to need a super line replacement.
That, I know, no, you would need to exact the, if we did something that wasn't port of John's, we'd probably need to do, uh, we probably need to connect with somebody else.
Oh, so the, the, that's exactly, they don't have them go plumbing?
Yeah.
That's a, that's a dispossess.
Yeah, of course. Well, you want, you would also have to find two there.
Okay, well, he, he was saying that it clogged up a lot, I just thought maybe there was an issue with the line like Dover at Ramsey. If it's seventy years old, I mean, you might want to consider leaving that money to the side, just, just a thought.
This, this, we can tag that out, as we're looking into it and find out what, what the bottom was. Um, with that.
One last thing, Eric. Street maintenance and repair, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I spoke with Dylan about this. And he was advocating that we, um, save over the next few years, like maybe something to the tune of a million dollars. And we do like a massive renovation in accordance with that land, um, or sorry, with the paving survey. What's the worst areas that need to be milled? Like an entire neighborhood, like where Dale lives. Probably one of the worst that I've seen, or, um. Across that barber shop on in Melkette, those roads are so high and narrow, because they're so crowded. We really need to take that seriously, I just, uh, I really want to see the town make a plan over the long term of doing like a serious road renovation. Where it's needed the most. Cause like, it's your cousin, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Little neighborhood. The houses are so low and all the yards flood, arguably because of the streets, I've talked about this before. Um. Should we cost to do like that whole street or a couple, or maybe we want to save the money or certainly give it a time? We can accumulate interest on that, correct? As we save that.
Yeah, it is.
And then. And then we get a better rate because we. We find a contractor that does a larger project, rather than nickel and dime, and then we pay up the lawsuit for these small projects. No.
What you think we could save if we, if we, for three years?
Think it's more of a, how much are you going to be able to get done in one lump sum?
Mm-hmm.
Right, but that's, that's directly related to how much we can save back.
Um, so.
Cause, cause if we save back a million, we're giving a lot more done, if we save back three hundred thousand.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, like John's case, if you, if you, uh, the place I was at last week, there's seven, uh, we did a similar thing of what he just, what, what he just said. And we ended up doing a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, but fifty of that will never go away, and that's where you're saving it by not calling them out multiple times. But, um, we, uh, one of the things to talk about today is, uh, legal tag fees. Uh, so there's, uh, one point six million dollars of one line cost in this current budget. So next year, we'll have a similar level of revenue and. With one point six million of this unit, it would just one thing cost. Right, there's going to be a surplus next year too, okay? Can we just put five hundred thousand next year and five hundred thousand following year to make a million to do a lot of.
That's, that's one of the questions, you're asking us to say back.
Uh, yeah. Depends on how much you're going to do elsewhere.
I know you.
You know, we would, you know, all you want.
We have to remember, we're still dealing with flooding mitigation.
Mm-hmm.
And until that flooding problem. Oh, it's big, I'm going to the streets. Uh, because they flood and constantly flood, and I can walk down my street, twelfth street. And it's starting to, it's starting to buckle, that's directly from the flooding.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm, I'm at, I'm at eight level, I'm at street level. So, and, 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 and with the streets, and that's a, that's a funny thing that you would write that, uh, because, um. Right now, in the state, it's like you're dealing, it's, it's like you're trying to hamstring municipalities. The bill is that we cannot have any developer with requiring wider streets than DOT requires.
Mm-hmm. Is that some of the downzoning that you're talking about last time?
And so it's moving, pushing its way to now. And so we would probably be better served trying to get some of this stuff done sooner than later. Uh, and if, if this passes, then it's a wrap, it's just like, yeah, there, there's another one, Jack and I have been discussing this. Taking away all of your rights. And though, and DJ.
Yep, I saw that.
So, uh, just making that, is happening, uh, over there, because it's going to directly affect. How we do it in so many.
There was no, by the way, any split.
So, I can eat this, matter of fact, um, we'll prove that county has, has, uh, somebody mad in our county. Someone outside who just, who, what's, it's, it's stopped. It stopped till they found out what this thing is going, what's going to happen with them.
Money.
Yeah, before they spend the money, so. Um, just be mindful of what is happening in those areas.
Yeah.
Except the, like, and, and that, and all of those community, communities are one of the things that I think that hit us. The niches, the coverage.
Mm-hmm.
They got, they claim, they got, it be dug out.
So. What you do, is the two fifty of the power bill. If you're cool with the pictures, cover, so. We, we, so strength of the thumb.
Sir.
I, I think it's kind of like break back, we hit the road, and so we can hold it.
Oh, it's like the soccer.
And, 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 this is, we know, I, I'm doing man, the strong rock program this year. We're going to, we want to see a weekend outcome back. We met, we called stacks. The banks. So that's, that's kind of what the thinking was and the mindset was.
Particularly, there's, there's really, which is perhaps we need to look around here.
Yeah.
So I say, let's just. I like the, the same, the phones, but we, it's a fantastic idea. Some benches.
And some of these streets can't wait.
It's been as long, two fifty, maybe, use a portion, say, same somewhere back.
It's also prevented the measures of patching and, yeah, that's what we can do, also, too, with that one.
Dylan, have you ever looked at, I've heard, but I'm sure you have. Michael Payton.
Sorry, sir, yes, sir.
Okay, for what, when you kind of give a two-minute class on what that, yes, exactly.
Basically, it's a, it's an asphalt, it's, uh, it's more tar and sand. And it's better used when you have good roads that you're trying to make last another ten years.
Yeah.
Recycle now, so, for roads that are recently done, if you hit it on that, you're going to extend the life of that about, uh, ten years. Some of these streets that are, we call it alligator bracket, when it's like alligator skin, that's done, we're going to, we're going to start a kind of surface.
I'm not really consulting it specifically, especially that, or what. Yeah. So like saving investment by maintaining it, basically.
Uh, and also, quick, quick, that, I mentioned, it was one point six, one point five, six hundred and ninety-five thousand of one line cost in the budget, sir. It was one point six a couple of weeks ago, sorry.
So downtown parking lot, we're talking about the Beaver Shore parcel, they're downtown on roads? Like that?
Yeah.
It's a pretty fair price.
So, just grabbing that.
Hmm? Hmm? Yeah, if you have the asphalt with the, the, those buildings down, down the hill, all sorts of runoff issue, gravel and purdies, very smart, purdies, excuse me. Um. Town hall gutters, that is something I do always mention about, because if you're having cosmetic issues with architectural works of the, the roof, the eave rotting. Uh, we'd have to pull those gutter right back off later if you wanna replace that, so these gutter, gutters being ended with a number size. Number size.
So, we are, um, today, a contract, we now, we're not gonna put new gutters up until the P A is replaced, the gutter companies won't even do that.
Yeah.
Um, so we're getting prices to replace that this budget year.
The flashing at the back, that back chimney, when you've got that rot on that inside corner, right there. That's probably flashing around the chimney, I don't think that's a gutter issue. So, listen, if you look at that, you probably get a lot of rot, if it hits that chimney, that splashes over, and then that, that, that capillary action that goes back into the eave, and it rots there. Is there like water coming down that way in the bathroom?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's not necessarily gutter issues, I just hope the contractors are really taking that into.
Two companies to come out, and the gutters that are on this building are not large enough, or there's not enough of them. For the water flow to come off of the building, and they're also residential gutters, they're not.
Okay, not, not chimneys plus, I, this for a month here, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, they're really, really expensive.
So, we had a trade roofing, and professional roofing to come out. And during the ones that told us that, um, there's a, uh, there's an oversized house, like, have faces on here around the building.
Discussions.
Uh, but that's the. This is the worst part.
Town hall windows, do we have original windows, like, in the bathrooms downstairs, or? Then some of them have been replaced.
Not a hundred percent certain how old are the windows are in the building. The building was built in nineteen forty-eight, we know they've been done since then, does any, Jack, do you know if there's any gutter works, I mean, not gutter work, window works that you've been hearing?
No, probably not.
Is that all of them?
Yeah.
For seventy-five thousand dollars?
I follow them. And John and I were proposing, um, since it's such a large project, to do a, a third of them over three years. And we've talked with window contractors, and they said that was a good idea, too.
Okay.
Commissioner, I think the fire hall windows were done early two thousands, late nineties.
Hmm.
So these were probably done before that, probably in the eighties.
And she just reminded me about the sprinkler system, well, you gotta, you can find so allow people to sleep there.
Yes, sir.
At the regulation for sprinkler system.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Guess that's all I've got.
Uh, Jack, on the, uh, Chatham Rescue. Yes, sir, thank you very much, yeah. Uh, I got, I keep hearing about, I wanna see about three, and then if he's unable to flush, he's a thing to clean can add. Uh, we, we, we've been talking to Chad and Rescue about twenty-five thousand a year, uh, they're not gonna make funding this year from, uh, the county. Which, uh, normally is about forty-five to fifty thousand, what they get from the county, so, uh, as a recognition staff, we believe. Uh, we, we do too, this is a continuing service that, we, we, that, but not to go anywhere, we, we, in the middle of provided, that came from Scott Brooks, he's a. Uh, board member with Chad and Rescue, talking about, uh, his request, so, I think ultimately, what we, we're seeing, we're seeing how much is that, what time, amount, we're gonna choose. And, and, and agreed for us to go into a green event, with some kind of expectations. And that they were providing that, uh, obviously working closely with the chief. Uh, and there's another piece of it that we don't have information, John's gonna look at their financial statements to see what their expenses are. Uh, probably, but, uh, that's really what we're looking at is, what is the number of things with it? It's probably twenty-five, it's, it's totally right, you hear from him, so, uh, he, he, he probably not gonna be here, he's.
Oh, same deal, man. The, like, the standard, or any kind of question.
Yeah, I'll be right back, yeah, come on, please.
Say, uh.
I'll show.
The number of calls.
For saying, everybody else, only the other five.
It's eighty percent of.
They they gonna come from just like us. City and our fire district, that's it.
So they, I thought since Kenny was funding.
No, they are just the central channel firing district and the town asylum city. So you know, twenty years ago, they did, they called it silk coat. Probably abandoned, but it's been pulled back since those departments have people going today and running medical calls.
So we proposed. Since they can't meet their benchmarks.
Right, that would drop two hundred calls, one hundred eighty to two hundred calls a year, that would drop from eight hundred to six hundred.
So would you keep it eighty percent of those cases?
Think so, at least eighty to ninety, if not. If they brought back to six hundred calls and they can read in the nerve matrix just like we are, maybe they need to move back calling E M S. Or assist any M S or, you know, they can do take what calls they go to, I think. The problem was back in the day, you did a hundred percent of calls coming in. Because that's what you needed to do and nobody's really revisited it and I think they admitted that the other week. The door is all back and revisited the response matrix, maybe you can pull that back. Maybe dispatches and responses. So I think they would be okay.
If we drop it to eighty percent response. Of all. We will kill the cause. Fifty thousand dollars. And then we need. Of benchmarks.
Uh clawback. Clawback.
Okay, that counts.
Yeah. Also, also how we pay, if we pay, we pay on some of the year or pay in the. And just hold some, you could do quarterly payments or. Pay.
Well, we could be anyways and we have to show the board.
Yeah, and that's what the county was doing, they were going a hundred percent of funding and then they pulled back if they run. Say March, they run thirty percent of their calls, then Steve would release thirty percent of the funding for that month. If they went to sixty percent, seventy, even eighty percent like they have it, then he would give eighty percent. It's just depends on how you guys wanna set it up. Um, three, two, three years from now, we'll build a firing station that way. We're gonna have that ten year thing with staff there. So, you know.
That's what I'm trying to kind of turn. Volunteers. We've been trying to fix off our policies and that way. So let's say Chad and Chris becomes firing rescue. It's gonna take to take over. Both operations. Staff ones. Ten years, ten years.
Years, we, under five years, thirty years, we can get that building done. Hopefully, I don't know when it'll be done, I do find it, we'll find it constructed, but. And then we, we have a trouble order. That's gonna help out in forty years, that probably. No, and we'll never do transport.
Okay.
Never.
What?
That is the county's problem. That is Chad County as general statute and as long as they contract with First Valley. We'll never have to take over transport.
Well, that's true.
Not on wood, no, I don't think it's official for us.
He needs transport. Okay.
That's a whole nother matter for John with Medicare, they're trying to get.
Cause I'm just, you know, one thing that. I'm gonna say advocate was because I know the services. How long does it take to go to your vision?
I'd say five years, three to five years.
Then we will be to. Take all.
Services or thirty five thousand.
Those were.
As someone to their labor has fallen.
That's what I'm saying. I'm, I mean, it's gonna take a ten years to get there.
And also, it just depends on how fast growth is.
Yeah.
And we can't forecast growth right now until we get some issues solved. Um, by the way, you're looking at the station out there at thirty four.
And then.
Five. Five million, yeah. Five million for a station.
See, there's a fundamental problem with volunteer. Um, scheme.
It's the moon's just not there, they don't have, they don't have any special tax like we do.
Okay.
They don't have an E M S or rescue tax. So that's, that's kind of what's, what's hurting them, they have tried. To revamp, that's why they're doing pay per call like we are. They tried, um, what we call duty rosters where you sign up from six to six. You're here and you get a fifty dollar or a hundred dollar stipend for being there. Um, they're trying to, they're, they're doing everything that they can that I can see. About five years, we did.
I appreciate you. I need to put this out in the. Out in the reverse, but. You know, the volunteerism is dying. If you don't play three that day, you'll take it over. Well, it's five, it's seven years, but if we don't play it wrong, and you decide, say, oh yeah, they're gonna be all good.
No, you're right, volunteerism, just in your churches, your clothes, I mean, it's, people have so much going on. It is hard to do stuff anymore, I could bend them for lasting as long as they have.
This conversation moving in that direction, I'm saying. We're gonna reduce the scope or refine the scope of travel rescue and, and maybe. Take some of the responsibilities and move them back over here, minus transport. And ultimately. Gradually, we're moving towards taking on a lot of the responsibility.
And, and we've, we've already started that with. Hire the two to six we did in nineteen and twenty, and then hire the three now. Now it's a little easier with three people because. With just two and we pop off a cardiac arrest on half block road. Two o'clock in the morning, they're down there and then we have a fire in town. We're gonna stop, we gotta stay where they are until that kind, sometimes it calls one thirty or forty minutes. So now I'm relying on the people who appears to get back, at least now that we have three, one can stay in town. The other two can jump the call with them. Um, moving that way and we are looking that way to help out, we're all in the next location which they will primary for that. Um, we're doing technical rescue, basically they are. Just like I said, a first responder, if the man falls and cuts his head and the ambulance is fifteen minutes out, they're there to start blood control. But then also if the Chad and Rescue does not get out, dispatch can send our guns, we're all E M Ts where they can do the same thing.
Better performance contract too.
So.
Some of that may say, yeah. No, our fire tax takes care of that, um. We thought of going ahead and talk about located where we can recruit some calls on these racks for hydro and different things, I think Ronald Rapid does that. But that, you know, that comes down for a price of a contract with a third party to do it. And that would just be. Yeah, I, I would look into seeing how far it is to do it now, so. And that alone may be additional person for his staff, we don't know what that looks like. But we do not get any reimbursement like Medicaid or Medicare or anything like that.
All right, do we need to learn about the finances to like justify seventy five thousand as opposed to the fifty?
So we definitely find out what the cash looks like. But if, if, uh, so seventy two five is that, is that what you guys are playing? Uh, I'll put it into seventy two five, that with the, um, if you're responding, so percentage it drops down, is that what you guys are learning, we have twenty five in there right now? All right, fifty total? What it comes out, right? They can operate on. Well, we each other, we can operate on what that number is, uh, they can make a, uh, say a fifty thousand dollar. A commitment to take it away. That will.
Also, we're pushing the scope of that, right, so, so with the reduction of. You know, I mean, with top reduction in heat on that.
Yeah. Listen, okay, maybe it's just going to ensure numbers. But we now need your, uh, L, the lights and weight thing, um, that you were discussing. Uh, so, uh, with the street have. One of the ways to generate now revenues, the seventh quarter career is, uh. Right now, we charge five dollars for vehicle taxi, you pay every time you register a car, you pay your corporate tax. Your plate completions and a vehicle taxi if you live in the city. It's five dollars right now, uh, fifth dollar just did one, just did theirs last year, theirs was thirty dollars. Uh, anytime you charge more than five dollars, a hundred percent of the money, five hundred, uh, must be spent on those career. Um, and, uh, six thousand in summer cities, so every five dollars is thirty thousand. I didn't know, uh, really twelve, fourteen back on. That you need to spend more on streets. That's, that's a given. Done, uh, doing what I'm pretty excited to be able to taxi.
Needs to use the money for better, um.
Street revenue, so you add your special revenue from, uh, and plus we spend on streets.
It's not just the support. Things and taxes that are increasing, counting is increasing in that way that increases going. And that's what affect your citizens.
Yeah.
I just don't know how, who the effect is gonna be.
Need something interesting, uh, on his own, he looked at the fact. Of how many, uh, people came in with the. Man, I can't, I believe it was thirty five, thirty dollar increase and they didn't hear any. This made it move on, that it was good, but that doesn't mean that.
Yeah, I had, uh, the, we're not working L P A, I was paying, please pay attention to this, see if they're, see if the people are paying and have any. So we have the agency of this North Island, uh, body vehicles. That collected, yes, which, uh, when you get your sticker, it will, would show up right, right there. So we see our city have. That's also collected in the same manner.
Why don't we just be transparent about on twenty first, uh, meeting, so the public can.
Yeah.
It's a funny thing, seventy dollar situation, cause you can't have them be taken to, it's all saying of. You give it all and get good roads and they're gonna have to be paid for. You, if you're gonna drive, I want you driving.
Hundred and fifty grand, right?
Twenty nine, one six thousand. We went with ten dollars.
Thirty thousand.
That's right, she'll need five. I was just saying, what we're looking at is overtime, uh, sitting in a, uh, this directly used for that. Uh, because.
I mean, ninety thousand, like, it would be pretty, it would just be random patches of, you know, that you could.
Yeah. Better than nothing.
This is the, I was, that, that was, I don't, like, this is thirty, we have a certain, any number between there.
To the public for consumption. Think about, be honest about it, we'll have to sell. We're going to pay a fifteen dollar increase.
And we have a few regular condition surveys, um, let's say, let's say we recommend fifteen dollars, which will vary in the, in the actual sixty thousand. And if we charge this, this street, this street and this street will get that.
That's exactly what you're telling me, what you do. This philosophical discussion last week. Some taxes.
Yeah.
Does Jerry. Hope for some. Think of. Hope for some good. Sure, we'll check us on that. It's people hoping for services that we won't get. So if we don't, if we don't find the thing, we need to show. What we're gonna get for that money. So. Actually, go through it.
I, I personally think thirty dollars is too much for this area.
What we need to look at.
It's like you said, if everyone got their new tax assessment.
Well, if we increase it to fifteen, ten dollars, sixty thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I don't think fifteen is unreasonable.
But what do you get around for sixty thousand dollars?
Especially nine thousand.
It's not.
That's certainly nine, it would be nine, we, we try. If, uh, hold a line, it does not need to be balanced, but any amount you target over five, that difference must be.
So if fifteen collected.
Yeah, fifteen or five to ninety, sixty of which must be balanced rates.
And there's a lot of households.
But we could spend nine million on streets.
You spend, you spend all thirteen million dollars.
Got a cell phone.
I don't think you're gonna, but you, you gotta show what you're gonna do with it. Actually, do it, we can't just say we're gonna do it.
But, but when do we ne- need to make the decision of what the fee's gonna be, do we need to make it tonight?
When you need, when you're saying fifteen, fifteen is your cap, I'll. Uh, I'll say, we know, we'll get together, we'll, uh, if we only have thirty thousand, these other streets, if we do it to fifteen for sixty thousand, these other streets. We'll set it out in whole, all of which, what you guys think, but yeah.
Yeah, cause I don't want it to be like the money that's been sitting in the fund for ten years. That's supposed to have been to replace my water line that has never been replaced.
It's a process that can put in. Survey monkey or something.
It's ninety thousand, that's gonna be like major.
Well, it's gonna be a few three quick hits.
That's better than.
So. I mean, always, I mean. I'm not saying we do this, but if we start at fifteen and we see that, you know, we get a few things down with sixty thousand or ninety thousand. You know, we see later on, we need to go, oh, you know, increase five more dollars, that, you know, it's a little less impactful than something from five to thirty. If we start at fifteen and then go to twenty and then, you know, work our way up. Well, and it also gives people. Uh, a chance to see the work being done and the money applied, um, that, that, you know, that justifies the price increase.
Let's say we start from fifteen and see where, we, we.
Exactly what's going on and what's, how it's gonna be utilized, and so I do agree that, yeah, on the next meeting week or ahead and. Uh, next, uh, first meeting in May, we go ahead and make that public. Of how that money, what that increase looks like.
And also commit every dollar to streets.
Yeah.
You're all sixty, not only long, you're all sixty.
What are we actually doing the other part?
The other part is, it's just, it's, it. It's, uh, unrestricted, so theoretically pays for a penny of everything in the bucket already. There's, there's, uh, there's. There's about thirty, that, there's about thirty thousand dollars of street stuff in five sixty, that is theoretically being funded by that, so.
We just ran for sixty, we're just, if we do anything worthwhile, then we can present to the public.
About, about, what's it like, actually, is about five?
Uh, for square yards, I think about those square yards. We, uh, you already, it's just, just patching.
Yeah.
There's, there's a lot of that there, you can just use the patch.
Yeah.
Why don't you just? Um, just get some.
Hey, we're, we're charging a fifteen dollar.
To the next public comment and give a. Public user, I guess. Do we do that? Some public feedback.
Yeah, let's, let's say we.
Yeah, it's, it's a temporary gap between the public hearing and when we can actually adopt the bribe, so we'll have ten days of that.
Okay. All right. All right. Can you put it with the high number two, just so they know, like, they might get most. With a higher fee, just to quantify something.
If it was a ten, fifteen.
Well, if it's just two, like, like what Sid said, and then the high, the, the, the most that we're able to do.
So for fifteen, it's gonna be.
We just gotta be transparent with the public and just let them know that we provision the streets is a very costly thing. Um, and we're, we're not, we're, we're just not funded well for, we just don't have.
I say we could really start with the five and say, this is what you're getting now, but if we increase, this is what you will be able to get.
Okay, we're not getting anything out of it now.
Well, I'm saying.
Basically, already have your streets are.
It's for session. Uh, and they may not be happy, but they, you know, you know, well, they're doing something.
Yeah, there, there are streets that you drive on, that may not be paid. It's sad.
So Pittsburgh said. Fifteen. And so Pittsburgh's charging double. Then I don't think we should get it.
No, no, that, that's no way to consider that.
So what we can do to get some information out and not wait until on May. Is, uh, the meeting Monday night, John can do a memo and kind of do some math and go ahead and ship that down as a budget item. On this agenda, cause we haven't finalized the agenda yet. And that gives some discussion for the public comment period, the first, um, the first meeting of May. And then, um, we'll have the, um. The manager will present the budget and then it's got a, um, public hearing, got a ten day waiting period before the public hearing. Or Pete, the, um. Baldwin can inspect the document and then they come to public here to question. I think that gives us an extra two weeks, so, and I, and like I said, there's been some research already done on it, I don't. Would you be okay with doing a memo for Monday night?
Absolutely not.
I mean, that gives y'all a little more time to kick it around and stuff and get it before the.
Okay, I think your next up.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so. Oh, I'm sorry, you had a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got it.
I hope it had effect, just right here.
This video.
We'll, we'll get your, still get you your inspection.
So will that make you six months in here?
What?
The branch.
You live here.
And hopefully, where to.
They cover your full year, from June to, uh, July, June. You're going to, you'll pay your tax between.
Running our taxes at January first. Will that include a full year of funds or have?
Yes, yes.
Even though you've already paid the half of you?
Uh, yes, so it's covered, so the tax will be coming out August twenty twenty five to be paid. Uh, January twenty twenty six, it'll have, uh, it'll have a garbage fees times twelve on there. And so you're, uh, you're not paying, uh, so you will be paying for July twenty twenty five from June to six. To January fifth.
Okay, cause people are gonna ask that same question, they're thinking they're getting charged double because they've already paid from January.
So we're basically doing the fiscal year.
See, they, they will not understand that, that needs to be explained.
People are gonna pay this June, uh, so the, so, um, since we, uh, we were asked to not put any garbage fees on the final bill that some of the cities says on for utilities. They're paying, uh, twenty five percent more the la- the last three months, the last two months and the next two months.
But that needs to be explained to the public that not, you're not paying twice for those.
Cause most folks think in terms of.
Uh, we have not. Message related to.
Yes, you can say, but you're gonna have a question, I guarantee you.
Also, we'll never understand if.
Don't think this goes, I think, generally.
All right. You're putting notes out.
Okay, if you'll flip to the new pay study that was put out at the tables tonight with global revisions that we were, that we're hanging to with. It was that late out tonight. Um, we'll start.
Oh, sorry.
It looks like this. So, there were two things to administration, you noticed that now under administration, we have buildings and grounds as the next department. Um, we took that, um, buildings and grounds back out of public works and moved that back up, um, to a separate. Department, the salaries were always paid out of buildings and grounds, we just had them under public works. No, no amounts have changed there, consultants, no changes, L P A, no changes. Crime and community development, no changes, police, no changes. You'll go through the charter department, you'll see. Um, three proposed, three proposed positions, captain positions. And I want the chiefs, uh, Murphy to, um, the. These, these amounts were already included in your salaries and wages for your departmental budget, you have. But we wanted to include these on the, um, the whole entire pay study. So do you want to explain these positions to her quick?
The, uh, career captains. There'll be a shift captain, each shift, we have three shifts, we'll be a captain. They're basically like the P D sergeants on shift, they will supervise that shift and employees on them. So what we're doing is just trying to move forward again as a professional department and get set up to where, when we start moving forward, we have these positions in place. So to me, it would be basically like a sergeant at the P D. Just not carrying a gun.
So, um, as you can see, the name minimum for those, there's no, um, three and a half percent call off. Because these would be July one positions and that's the minimum, but again, we just wanted to include those, so there's, as, um, place markers on the, um, pay study. And the next one you will see, if you come down to public works, you will see that we have as proposed public works director, we're giving that back to public work superintendent. So you'll see a decrease in that salary too. And so that was the only changes. And so that was the only changes, so if you look at the last page, you'll see total increases, additional taxes and total costs. You'll see a decrease from um. They co-op and additional taxes from the original place. And that's reflected on the summary um eight week for the. And that's the only changes.
Looks good. I really like the fact that John.
So the million dollar question. Are we ready to turn this budget over to the town manager to prepare? Presentation. On the bottom budget.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If you will look in the very last part of your um, your book. You'll see the um fiscal year twenty twenty five anticipated cost of living adjustments and maybe increase survey results. So I'm. That for you, show her. Yes, uh-huh. It'll say two on the very, the last tab, it'll look like this.
The reason why I understand this, that I heard on the news last night. That teachers may get a two point five percent raise and other employees one point five for the. So, so that, so this is like a percentage higher, so I'm trying to see how it's justified. You understand?
I understand. So this was based off the um. On the different populations of municipalities and what they reported for this study. Um, through the North Carolina League um of municipalities. And so by population groups, the statewide average came in three point five, uh western North Carolina was three six. Um, the average in Piedmont's three four and um east coast was three point seven with a statewide average of three. So we typically got try to go by um, what the North Carolina League. Of municipalities, what they recommend, um but again, that's the pleasure of the board.
Well, management, is this gonna be an every year thing?
What the COA, the cost of livings, it um, it just depends on what the market and the state, the state does. It will be something, you know, whatever data that we compile, that's what we would propose to the board.
Because I guess I just, I just have a, not having a problem giving anybody money, but I have a problem with. Looking at what the state budget is going to allow teachers. And other state employees and then we're, we're looking at giving a percentage higher than that. But we're not following, it looks like, uh, we're, we're not following what other people are doing as far as in, in. The same type of uh situation.
So, so this is what the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners and the, and the league basis, so municipal, the local municipalities. I know the state um operates a little bit differently than we do, so.
I don't, but like I say, the people's getting two point five pursuits, have some of the same bills that the people.
It was. Been pushed by this county and other counties. And enough to allow lips like you won't move.
My, I think that's really something that's wrong.
The issue with uh the state does it. And if you remember, we had a, and I wasn't Texas, they came here and was giving out teachers about five or six years ago. And they say, so what? So you, you had a educational system that was in the top. This now in the bottom.
Yeah.
Uh, raises and how we give them. I think it needs to be understood, we're basing these raises on what services, because this is a service industry. And how people receive their services, so. And stress that. Something in the past, we have to stress it now, like I saw next year and like sure it may not look like this. But it variation in services and it may be a totally different animal. Uh, but you have to, you 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 cannot, uh. Yeah, we give notice, I guess, is what we're looking for as far as our services. And when the complaints go down, uh. Everything's still going well, when the planes go up, we have a problem.
People feel like, well, every year I'm gonna get a three and a half percent raise or a four.
And the other thing to, to keep in mind, I know Cindy's talking about. Teachers and and all of that and I'm just gonna lay it out here. Supplement is awesome. It's like, yeah. We do get.
Well, some people get money, I know, it's a good one.
But I'm just saying, the supplement for Chatham County schools. And our county is, and is, we compete. So I'm saying is both just looking at what, what we have within Chatham County. Yeah, we, I mean, these, these are cities, just looking at what we have. Our, our supplements are in competition with, it was all heal.
I don't know, I'm trying to give anybody a raise, of course, just wanna make sure that, like. Donald said, if you're gonna look at it year by year, personally, I personally. Is that not what you're saying?
Yes, yes, that, that, you know, you see, you just sort of notice that, you know. This is not something to be expected every year, just a little nearly. You know, if you're doing well, you're, 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 it, it shows up at this time of the year. And uh, the most part, I think, that we're doing well. We, we, well, did we add some higher aspirations, yes, but we're getting there.
And I just wanna add, this is the best control. Like a controlled method, like our pay study. For the um, for the cost of living raises, the best control that we have for the municipalities. And um, what we do. Yeah, cause it's, again, it's um, yeah, finally, and it also, again, it paces it, breaks it down even. Um, as the pay study does, it breaks it down by population and um, and what you're given, so.
So let's go back one more time. We handed over to the town manager to finalize and get ready for presentation.
Don't take into account and like individual behaviors, how many of the hero people could be remarkable in this place?
Read that software. It was, it was so much, it was so subjective.
And some people were. And I've been putting those vocal people against the. And being those vocal people for increase.
So many ways to manipulate. Some parts into there, but as Kimberly was fixing to say. The new software that's in this budget will hopefully alleviate. Some of that uh, human input, I guess you would say. Um, I can give you another example or some, um. They need on the. Inside, when I say inside, on the residential side of the water meter. The couple came here, we talked about it. Two, um, the employees came here and showed me the valve. And I said, well, all they want you to do is go back and tell them what to tell the plumber so they can replace it. Those people called me thirty minutes later and they fixed it. The tile employees fixed it, so you see what I'm saying? That, that right there stuff, it's in volumes to me.
And that's, that's why they should last for your, for your survey. Yeah, they call in and recognize somebody.
But yeah, we need to recognize them, if we did, if we get a direct, uh, I think they're now on the license plate. There are actually people that come here that out of Chatham County because of the good customer service.
What I hear is like, oh, my cake, I need it to. Private, or sorry, the public sector, as well as the private sector. Utilize meritocratic system. And I don't think you can have your cake and eat it too, it's really hard to incentivize who are really, really good, if you don't have a reward for it financially, so. I would be even less critical of services, it's really hard to criticize it. If people are being rewarded for their individual contributions, just overall. It's like, you know, that's why businesses. Sure it is, we just, we have to kind of keep that in mind. System like that, maybe it's a toll or like a wish, I just uh.
Um, you know, to use the software. I, I don't even wanna say.
The software removed bias.
It's proven to remove, um, not all bias, but it is um proven to remove a lot, a lot of it, yes. Posits again, kind of a control. Um, Channing, your gentleman has just informed me that, or just sent me a text, um. We typically don't get the league's latest of the current year, um, merit increase study. And they've released it early this year, because we're always a year behind on the results and it's, it will be a three point one percent increase, so we will need to adjust that by summer league.
So instead of three point five, three point one?
Which is three point one.
Are you talking about Nicole?
Yeah, yeah, they just released, um, yeah. And a lot of times they don't release it until, so we're always a year behind on that data.
I'll just, the payback on this comment, um, and trying to think of ways to. Um, offer, you know, not necessarily uh pay for performance, but um, there's gotta be a way somewhere, somehow. To, to um, consider like a goal based evaluation or, or some goal based performance or something like that. As we're talking, I don't know how to quantify it, but this is a conversation for later, but. I, I feel like there's a way to, to do employee evaluations. And have some, like, some benchmarks within that evaluation for following year to earn some kind of bonus.
To think about this real quickly, and we've had this discussion. There are people that work here or work anywhere for twenty five and thirty years. They never advance, they never back up, they stay in that one spot, because that's where they wanna be. Then you have other people that stay on the same job same length of time, but they dodge everything and you never catch up with it. And do you remember we needing the certification? With the gentleman that. We can get anybody to go for the certification. So, we remember that was gonna be, it was a salary increase. So it's one of those things that is up to the individuals. Do, that will set advancement. And it, and it shows up, if, if there's a school opening that would give me ten more dollars on my home, boy, that's cool.
Yeah, I, I, I also, I also think times are different than they were, you know, back during those days. I mean, as we look at the volunteerism model, and we're not talking volunteerism, but we're talking cost of living increases. The other people are having more, more jobs, earning the same amount of money to, to maintain their cost of living. So if we're not offering a low pay increase to make it workable for somebody, they go there extra mile and they just stood, then of course they're not gonna do it.
But that's what I just said, that, that, that certification got you more money.
More money, but I mean, I, I, I'm questioning, I'm gonna question you, questioning whether that money was enough to entice a person to go further. To handle the extra responsibilities of. Right, that's what I'm saying, so like, if we, if there's a way for us to, to really dig deep enough. To make sure that we're taking care of our people to the point that. Um, you know, maybe we're offering bonuses, I'm not saying we have to, I'm just saying maybe we should consider it at some point, you know, in the near future down the road. Because things are changing, you know, Adam's revenue is not seven hundred dollars anymore, it's gone up to almost probably over double that. You know, it's a little different, I mean, that's starting to mean differently about how we, how we operate. Uh, so that we can bring saying people in positions for longer time. And after invest some training and retraining and hiring and firing and all those.
About goals.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I think we have talked about that at some point in time before. About who having, you know, having to have set goals. But again, at that particular time, it wasn't one of those things that could be generally implemented. Because of. In fields, what do you do if they reach that goal?
Yeah.
Um, what do you, what do you do? And um, I think if, if there is a way to figure out how to. Uh, reward someone for. Yeah, for what they do, then it will be good to find it. But you also have to know what is going to drive that person. They may not have the drive to do the extra, because they're satisfied. And so we have to look at it, you know, they said, what are you satisfied with? And do you want to progress? And if, it's gonna take input from the people that you're trying to assist. And then if they're not willing, you can't make it.
We, we also have to feel the system for tracking. That's in the personal file.
So this, this completely. So this completely tracks it, so um, one good thing about it is, um, we can set it uh. To where directors or supervisors who never have to, they have to put, they have to plug something in um every two weeks, let's just say.
I'm talking about tracking from public's end.
The update, some of them do, like uh Jessica's got like a couple things wrong.
Yeah, I mean, it's gotta be like. Like, the lady called me about Jessica, I didn't, I didn't know the lady.
For the funds, it's trapped up for the funding to have, but when the exceptional job is done.
That may get the bias.
But I'll tell you, in case I had. And so I gave the chief the names of the responding officers. You know, I'm gonna serve you a fair out for that. So the lady responded to days in and. Um, she has no way to put that to us.
Towns that have a link on their uh, on their website, it says, come in about. They can go there and, and type things in like that.
When you click on something, it's a call. For our quick survey.
Or maybe that is something that's kind of comical, I'll ring her, send them a ringer. Yeah, they send people to customer service to see how they're gonna be treated. Oh, there's some crazy show that says that it's, who's the, where, who's the boss, what is it?
I know what you're referring to.
We can go ahead and give you kind of a little, real quick, this is positive. Um, doing the three point five percent COLA, three point one, it will reduce it, with John would have to calculate the budgets to one forty eight thousand.